Let me try that. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm going to start the meeting with a couple of announcements after. So we have a council committee of the whole meeting for today, which is Tuesday, April the 23rd, 2024. So I'm going to start with a land acknowledgement. The City of Medicine Hat acknowledges that we live and work on treaty territory. The city pays respect to all indigenous peoples and honors their past, present, and future. We recognize and respect their culture, cultural heritage, and relationships to the land. And we'll just take a moment for reflect, reflection and prayer. Okay, thank you. One last announcement. It's basically in relation to media. Please note that we've implemented some changes to council chambers. The chamber floor are now, are for staff and administration only, and as such, all media interviews following the council meetings will be conducted outside the chambers in the legislative hallway. Thank you for your cooperation with this slight shift. I had another announcement here and regarding the disrespect, the respectful environment, but I think we're safe today, so I think I'll pass on that one. So I think we're good to go. So our number one and only item is the 2020, 2025 budget planning, and I will turn it over to City Manager Mitchell. Thank you.
Thank you through the chair. I'm just going to have some introductory remarks. This is our only item on the agenda this, this afternoon. So, good afternoon, members of council, the public and administration. Today's meeting, we are launching the 2526 budget discussions with council to ensure that we're meeting the strategic priorities and vision of council and planning our budget to inspire confidence that we are appropriately meeting the needs of both council and the community. Tonight's present, today's presentation will speak to our community story and articulate our budget, budget commitments to the people of Medicine Hat. We'll share our financial state, our current and future priorities, as well as external pressures and uncertainties that we are facing and how best to address them. There will be a lot of information this evening shared with you. However, this is just the beginning of our budget journey, and we will have many more meetings, so this is just the impetus meeting that will lead us down that journey. As administration, we've had broad discussions on the best way to describe this budget, and the word balancing act continues to come up. How do we meet today's needs with tomorrow's priorities? And how do we balance that? Challenging is managing the expectations of our stakeholders and making sure that we keep our property taxes low. So we have to make sure we, as administration, are not only implementing council's vision, but we are also looking at meeting the expectations of service delivery for the community. So in today's preliminary budget discussion, we want to set the path in the right direction, and our objective today is to capture insights from city council on our proposed approach to budget, planning to ensure we can successfully deliver a budget that aligns with priorities and aspirations of you, our elected leaders, here to represent the interests of the community. There will be key touchpoints in 2024 to gain council's feedbacks, opinions, and recommendations, and this will include capital deliberations scheduled for June and July and operating deliberations that are set for October, November. I'll now turn it over to our CFO, Dennis Egert, to give some more introductory remarks.
So just during the pause and while you get ready, could I just confirm who's online? I think we have Mayor Clark online, is that correct? And Councilor Robbins. Okay, awesome. Thanks very much.
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm McGrogan, thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead, thank you.
Good afternoon, through the chair, Chairman McGrogan and the rest of council. Thank you very much for allowing us through this committee of the whole to present to you our 2526 budget assumptions. So the budget is one of the city's primary financial planning tool. And it aligns the strategy with appropriate financial resources. It's the key accountability tool for ensuring the city's financial resources are being spent according to the strategic vision of council. The budget is the largest organizational-wide project that the city performs on an ongoing basis. Many of my city colleagues will be involved over the next several months to make this a reality. Today, we are here to officially kick off this budget process by discussing our plans and approach. And before the detailed work begins by the staff, we are establishing a plan and approach that will help set the tone, the direction, the key assumptions, and financial targets for the budget development. So this today is the initial step of the 2526 budget process. So our, our objectives today is to capture the insights from council to ensure that you are confident that our process will result in a final budget that strikes the right balance for the city as a whole and supports the strategic plan and vision for the community today and into the future. This will be achieved through thoughtful consideration of all perspectives that impact the city. We're not seeking approval today from council, but rather, we're looking for your perspective, insight, and input on our approach and resulting key budget assumptions. Again, this is the first step in the budget journey. We do have a rigorous budget process that we've developed with numerous touchpoints with council along the way. In addition to today, you, we will see you again in June and July to discuss capital, in October, November, to discuss operating budgets and, and utilities, and then a presentation for final deliberation and debate and approval in December. And again, that December date is required by the MGA. And today, we're going to cover a lot of ground, and I want to just highlight a few things. Our budget theme, as mentioned by the city member, is actually quite straightforward, balancing the needs of today with the requirements of tomorrow. And you'll hear this theme echoed throughout the presentation. You'll also see our environmental scan that highlights some of the significant post-pandemic challenges, not only faced by other municipalities, but also by the City of Medicine Hat. It also describes unique challenges for us, specifically the uncertain risks and opportunities related to how we respond to the energy landscape and how it may impact our city's energy assets, as well as future projects, including a future recreational facility. Further, we'll share with you our budget commitments, and those commitments articulate our pledge to the community and to city council by defining the general principles that will guide us as we develop the budget. Finally, we are anchored in our fiscal targets, and you will see those throughout the presentation. Those will focus on financial sustainability and will reference 10-year financial targets that we believe are required to meet our commitment. These targets are the basis for establishing budget assumptions in order to ensure that we are on track as an organization. And here, we will examine a few aspects. What do we need to do today to prepare for tomorrow? To maintain our advantages that we enjoy today? How can we ensure competitive taxes and utility charges? And how do we maintain overall capacity and flexibility as an organization to meet our future obligations and those opportunities that lay before us? So during this presentation, you will, we will also pose a few key strategic questions to council. There's four of them. And we believe these questions will provide feedback to us as we plan a, a successful budget for 25 and 26. So again, today, the discussion and related input over the next few hours will be an important first step to ensure alignment with council administration. So before I hand this over to my colleague, at this time, I would like to express my thanks to those who were involved to date to prepare this presentation, under the leadership of Finance Director Barta, specifically Aaron Heimer, Accounting Supervisor for Budget and Systems, Energy Representatives that we have here today, Director Graham and the Communication Group, various budget teams and steering committees. And so with that, I will hand the remaining presentation over to my colleague, Aaron Heimer.
Great, and thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here with you all today to discuss our budget plan for 2526. Before we begin, I just want to do a little bit of housekeeping. Today's discussion is meant to be just that, a discussion. We have natural pauses at the end of sections where questions may be appropriate, and we can always go back in the presentation to, to reference things that we've passed. We also have some specific questions that we are going to have a little fun today trying out a new technology. You will, you should have received an email with four links in it. When prompted, we will get you to open the link and answer the question live. All responses are anonymous and are meant to provide a sense for administration about where council's head is at today regarding specific issues. Beyond that, if there are any moments that you would like to interject or ask questions, today is your deliberation. So please just stop us, and we will open the floor. However, before we begin today, the, the discussion portion of today, we would like to give a quick presentation to set the stage and to share our budget commitments with you and the community. We ask that we reserve questions until after that initial presentation has commenced. There we go. All right. Our community's story is unique. How we were formed and how we evolve, have evolved, is it important to understand our current situation? With that in mind, I want to start from the beginning. In 1883, the Canadian Pacific Railway stopped to build a bridge across the South Saskatchewan River, and a town, a tent town was born. With the arrival of the railroad came the Northwest Mounted Police. They maintained law and order among the railway workers and indigenous people of the area and made Medicine Hat a law-abiding town. In the CPR's search for water, their drills accidentally struck gas west of town, heralding the exploration that mapped out one of the largest gas fields in North America. In the latter part of 1903, city council embarked on a program to supply residents with gas, beginning the city's own, city-owned utility. In 1906, Medicine Hat was incorporated as a city and was the largest community in southeastern Alberta. Its residents were using natural gas as an inexpensive source of energy. The City of Medicine Hat was spurred on by its bounty of natural resources to develop a diverse economy of farms and ranch lands, brick plants and pottery kilns, glass products and greenhouses, railways and hotels, and many other industries. After the First World War, the economic recession of the early 1930s and prolonged drought resulted in a substantial exodus of people from the prairies. Even so, Medicine Hat was buffered when compared to the rest of the country due to its strong but fluid manufacturing base, railway positioning, and affordable natural resources. Over its history, Medicine Hat has been branded with numerous monikers: Pittsburgh of the West, Chicago of the West, the town that was born lucky, Minneapolis of Canada, and Little Pittsburgh, all alluding to Medicine Hat's economic development and prosperity. However, Medicine Hat got these nicknames not because life has always been good in Medicine Hat, but because of our ability to stand up in the face of adversity. Our city has certainly experienced its share of adversity and ship, even shipwreck and floods. However, it is the people, their spirit and philosophy that make the city an early, made this city an early success and continue to drive Medicine Hat forward. Medicine Hat's stable development from railway tent settlement to town to city has continued even during periods of economic instability like what we are experiencing today. The city's permanency can be attributed to its economic diversity, local ingenuity, and the calculated risk takers that comprise Medicine Hat residents. Today, in this post-pandemic environment, the City of Medicine Hat is facing challenges much like it did in the 1930s, and we are not alone. Cities across Canada are facing financial troubles. Last year, the City of Edmonton projected that it would reach a $73.8 million deficit for year-end budget and is now reaching out to the province for help. Calgary likewise announced last year that it faced an annual funding, average funding gap of $311 million, and since 2014, 26 municipalities in Alberta have undergone extensive viability reviews overseen by the Ministry of Municipal Affairs, and 13 have voted to dissolve. This is not unique to Alberta. Cities across Canada like Saskatoon and Toronto have also signaled financial difficulties. Many are struggling with issues such as inflation, aging infrastructure, wage pressures, stagnant population growth, and declining revenues, including transit and intergovernmental grants. And like in the 1930s, Medicine Hat is not immune to any of the factors impacting other municipalities. We are experiencing these same pressures. However, despite these pressures, the city's finances are in good shape for now. What sets the city apart? The same thing that set it apart in the 1930s, the city's ingenuity and resilience, and of course, our natural resources. Our industrious founders created a legacy that continues to benefit our community in our electric generation. The investments in energy, which have been at the bedrock of the city's prosperity from the beginning, are still paying dividends for the city's residents. Today, we can say in a time when other cities are facing financial hardship that our city is financially healthy. However, we cannot rest on our laurels. The world around us is evolving rapidly. The natural gas wells that at one time were the pride of the city are now drying up, leaving an environmental responsibility for the city to remediate. And by 2035, the federal government has a goal of having a net zero carbon emission electrical system, calling into question the long-term profitability of our electrical assets. We have always relied on these resources to help us through the hard times, but within the next decade, the landscape for Medicine Hat could look very different. And as an administration, we are fully aware of these issues, and early estimates of future consideration are in the hundreds of millions of dollars, making the earnings of our energy business in the past few years appear rather inconsequential. The bottom line is that those things that have provided prosperity in the past for our city cannot necessarily be relied upon to support the city into the future, and we need to consider carefully how we can ensure the City of Medicine Hat continues to be a prosperous place, not just for the organization itself, but for everyone who lives and works within our beautiful city. In the next 10 years, our city is sitting at the crossroads of uncertainty and opportunity. As we head into planning for the 2526 budget, we must not merely consider what we can afford over the next two years, but we need to be doing what we can today to prepare for tomorrow. As we forge a path forward, we too, like our founders, must embody that same innovative spirit that has been integral to the success of our community. The collective task of administration and council in the 2526 budget will be to balance the interests, needs, and perspectives of a complex cross-section of stakeholders, doing our best so as it fits within the mandate of a municipality to provide for those needs. And not every need is necessarily a responsibility of a municipality. Provincial and federal governments also share a responsibility as well. But as long as it is within our jurisdiction, we must strive to find that balance. From taxpayers to business owners to vulnerable populations to surrounding cities and towns, the City of Medicine Hat has thousands of different stakeholders. All these groups rely upon the city for their daily lives, from the amenities that we enjoy to the city's facilities where they work, to the roads that we drive on, to the utilities that power our workplaces and homes. Knowing that we have only so many resources available, however, it is our job to find that right balance that prioritizes the needs of today with the requirements of tomorrow for all stakeholders of the city. This is what we define as a balanced budget. However, as a basic principle that should not be debatable, the municipality itself cannot be allowed to fail. For our residents, partners, and stakeholders to continue to thrive, the city must continue to offer services, maintain amenities, provide roads, deliver utilities, and more. To ensure that this is the case, we must prioritize the long-term financial sustainability of the organization as a basic starting point. And as we begin today, I just want to start by acknowledging that as an administration, we see this information every day. And because of that, we can sometimes be biased towards protecting that long-term financial sustainability. Our job is seeing that financial picture and the risks and potentialities on the horizon. And we can be risk averse at times. That is why city council's governing perspective is so important. Council is elected by the people of the city and represents their needs and desires. They see the big picture, and this helps us in our goal of creating a budget that balances the needs of today with the requirements of tomorrow. We need this engagement for healthy government, and we are pleased to be able to engage with you today. As we begin this journey, we want to begin with a set of budget commitments to our community, our guiding principles. These commitments communicate our intentions and aspirations for the 2526 budget. They represent what we consider to be a balanced budget. To share these commitments today, I want to pass it back over to our Chief Financial Officer, Dennis Egert.
Thank you, Aaron. In alignment with our budget theme, we've identified five key commitments that will underpin our budgetary planning. Firstly, addressing community needs and ensuring excellent service. Of course. Number two, balancing the affordability with the need to invest back into city infrastructure and operations. And number three, ensuring financial sustainability of our municipality. Number four, thoughtful use of our financial reserves for future needs. And number five, alignment with council strategic priorities. I would like to dig a little deeper into each of these, and starting off with the first one. So our first guiding principle is addressing community needs and ensuring excellent service. So our foremost obligation is to our community. We must prioritize our initiatives that address the pressing needs of our residents and uphold the standard of excellence in the services that we deliver. So how do we do that with our budget? One of the ways we are thinking about addressing community needs is by realigning our financial resources to where they can better serve the community. One of the primary tools that we will use is to realign finances this, this year to efficiency targets and service level reductions, which reduce funding in two areas that are not performing optimal value for the city, and to free up cash to help fund new initiatives to meet the needs of our community. Number two, balance affordability with the need to invest in city infrastructure and operations. It's important to strike that delicate balance between affordability for our residents and the requirement to invest back into our city's infrastructure and operations. We must make prudent investments today to lay a groundwork for a prosperous future. We should acknowledge at the outset that there are residents in our city who are struggling with affordability, from the rise of inflation to interest rates on mortgages and much more. This budget must carefully consider how to balance that reality with the reality that those same factors such as inflation and interest rate also impact the city operation in how they operate. So how are we thinking about this in our budget? One way that we are doing this is to avoid a drastic, avoid drastic property tax increases in favor of gradual predictable tax adjustments for residents. A primary tool that we have in our toolkit is our financial reserves. This helps the city by providing a stopgap so that city can recover at the cost, at the cost of inflation over time as, as opposed to all at once, like many other municipalities are doing. But our reserves also provide investment income for the city, which helps offset the needs to increase taxes to pay for services. The reality is that even if we were to provide the exact same services to residences today as we did last year, it'll cost more to do so. Thus, property taxes must acknowledge inflation. Another tool that we have available are the fair entry programs, which have been providing low-income residents of our city with relief on admission to facilities for years. In the past few years, this program has been expanded to include utility relief or cost pressure relief as well, and these programs or ones like them can be used to make the city more affordable for low-income residents within the city. Our third commitment, ensuring financial sustainability of our municipality. Our municipality's financial health without reliance on our energy production business unit is essential for our long-term viability. We must be committed We must be committed to reducing our reliance on volatile, unpredictable, and unstable commodity revenues through responsible budgetary practices and prudent management of resources. So how are we thinking about this for our budget? One way we are doing this is to stop dipping into our savings to pay for municipal operations by the end of 2026. This plan, however, cannot be achieved alongside providing affordability for our residents without continued reliance upon our business and investment portfolio income. We recognize that there is a right balance to how much reliance we should have upon our business and investment income to support our municipality. The reality is that the city is still very reliant on its business earnings to maintain financial health. The second area is phasing out our reliance on risky commodity-based revenues with more stable revenues sources over the long term. Our fourth commitment, thoughtful use of financial reserves for future needs. Our financial reserves represent a critical asset for addressing future challenges and seizing future opportunities. That includes energy transition, abandonment and reclamation obligations, as well as opportunities such as facilities for the future. We will exercise thoughtful discretion discretion in utilizing these reserves to meet the evolving needs of our community and clearly articulate the intent of these funds. So what kind of things are we thinking about in this budget? One way we are do, we are doing this is by ensuring our budget allows us to maintain an appropriate level of reserves, not just for the twenty-five, twenty-six period, but over the long-term horizon. Reserves provide investment income that helps offset the need for property taxes and ensures that we have capacity and flexibility to respond over the next ten years to the changing environment. Another way will be providing a plan on how these reserves will be utilized and specifically earmarking the, the specific future needs for such things as oil and gas abandements and energy transition, et cetera. This help, this will help us better plan for quantifying some of those future needs as we have already indicated today, as well as communicate our intentions behind how reserves will be used. The fifth and final commitment is aligning with council's strategic priorities. We also need to ensure that every dollar we spend aligns with council's strategic priorities and our corporate strategic objectives. How are we planning on doing this? This year, we've launched our integrated planning process that includes long-range financial forecasting, business casing for all new initiatives, and capital growth projects, a criteria process that ranks all of these projects, and departmental business plans based on objectives and priorities. This will help to ensure that we are only undertaking projects that are needed for our community and create long-term value and impact for our city in alignment with council's strategic priorities.
So before we continue into the next section here, I just want to open the floor if there's any opening remarks that anyone would like to make.
Sounds like everybody's good to go.
Okay, let's get into it then. Okay, we're here, we're going to try something new today. As I mentioned before, throughout the presentation, we do have some questions that we will pose to you. So if you haven't done already, please look at your email and ensure that you've received the email with the links and you're able to access them.
If I just might, I guess, question, I guess, a comment I want to make about that. I don't know what the rest of council feels, but I don't know the purpose of us anonymously answering where we sit on things. I thought that this would be more of an opportunity for us to hear from other council members about what their perceptions are. I've found that we have better decisions when we all talk about it. So if there's a, I guess, a gathering of those thoughts and then a discussion about where they come together, is that the purpose or the objective?
Absolutely. Yeah, we'll present the results and then give everyone an opportunity if they would like to comment on what they're seeing.
Okay, any, any other comments of anyone? Okay, thank you.
Okay, we want to start today's discussion by discussing some fundamentals when it comes to budgeting. We'll start with a budgeting 101. Talk about those things that make budgeting within a city unique. And then we'll move into an environmental scan and fiscal outlook, where we're going to show you what we're seeing on the horizon, what's happening around the city, things that are going to impact as we go into the twenty-five, twenty-six budget process. The third thing, based on the environmental scan, then, we've developed a series of fiscal targets that we want to share with you that we believe are important to keep our eyes on, not just for twenty-five, twenty-six, but also for the long-term horizon, that ten-year fiscal outlook, in order to maintain financial sustainability for the city. And then based on that, we will dive into our key budget assumptions, which is that tangible, the assumptions related to inflation and funding and all of those different things that we'll use as that initial starting point for directing the directors and rest of the organization in developing their budget. And just to note, all of the information that we're talking about today is absolutely preliminary. This is a plan. Things will change before we come back to council in November to finalize the budget, but this is, this is open for discussion today. Okay, so let's start with budgeting 101. So when we talk about the governance structure, how is, how is the governance structure for the budget? How do we, how do we manage this project? Ultimately, it's the city manager who is responsible for presenting the budget to council for approval, and delegates that responsibility of overseeing the budget development to the Chief Financial Officer, Dennis Egert. The executive team, made up of our managing directors who oversee the divisions and departments, represent those departments and are ultimately accountable for maintaining those budgets after the budget is approved, so they are closely involved with the entire process. For the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, the CFO has established a strategic steering committee to ensure that we stay on track, to remove any roadblocks that come up along the way. This group includes directors who oversee key budget processes. There's also a budget committee that executes the project by calling upon managing directors, directors, and managers across the organization. Budget committee members are typically the managers who serve underneath the directors, who are a part of that strategic committee. Their job is to execute, while the strategic steering committee is more of a governance function. The budget office is also a subsection of, of this process. This is a subsection of financial control and reporting, and the job of the budget office is to be a project manager liaising between the committees and process leads, financial control and reporting itself, which is our accounting group, and departments, ensuring that everyone has what they need to execute on the plan. When we're talking about budgeting in a municipality, it's important to keep in mind that municipalities are unique. These are some of the ways that budgeting within a municipality is unique. The first one here is that municipalities must budget as if we are going to operate indefinitely. Municipalities provide the basic foundational services that make it possible for people to live and work within Medicine Hat. As such, the city itself, the city corporation, must budget in a way to be around for a hundred-plus years. We have to, we have to ensure that we are around for the long run. Typically, that means that there is a bit of conservatism built into the approach for budgeting in a municipality. The second one is that by law, municipalities are actually not allowed to run a deficit. We can dip into savings. However, for a municipality to survive indefinitely, you can't dip into savings forever. So when we budget, we have to budget in a way that we can continue to live within our means. The third one here is a limited, limited in scope on the amount of property taxes that we can collect. Typically, a city only has two options when it comes to balancing the budget. Either we can do so through our savings or through raising property taxes. Thus, the city is limited in the services that it can provide based on the amount of property taxes it's able to collect. The taxpayers' tolerance for paying property taxes puts an upper limit on how much the city is able to do. What makes, what makes us different than provinces, the province and federal government is the fact that we are not allowed to issue debt for operations. We can issue debt for capital, but we cannot issue debt for operations, whereas a provincial government or a federal government could. Therefore, this, we cannot borrow debt to cover cash deficits. This is a basic mechanism to ensure that the city does not become over-leveraged and remains financially sustainable. And the final one here is that we must deliver on core services that are established within the Municipal Government Act, otherwise known as MGA. Finally, the city has a clear mandate outlined within the Municipal Government Act, which identifies the core services that it must provide. At minimum, the municipality must provide the services outlined within the act, which include things such as safety, fostering good government, protecting the environment, providing services and facilities that council deems necessary, and providing roads and Our budgeting process, we like to think of it in four phases. The first phase is a time of reflection. We reflect on council's strategic plan, which is that long-term aspirational plan that council puts together for the city, and develop our own set of corporate strategic objectives in order to execute on that strategic plan. We then take some time to look at our external environment and determine what's going on around the city that could impact our budget for 2025, 26. We'll then take a look at our own financial situation in our fiscal outlook, and that includes looking at our current state as well as a ten-year fiscal outlook. The second phase of the, of our process is planning, and that's what we're primarily here to talk to you about today. We've already discussed the budget theme and budget commitments, and for the rest of the presentation, we're going to bring you through our fiscal targets and our key assumptions as well. The four, the third phase is budget development, and during budget development, we build the budget. So we take away that plan, and we will work on developing that budget. And we've developed key milestones throughout the process to come back to council and have those deliberations and discussions to ensure that what we're building is in alignment with council's strategic priorities. And then, of course, the final is approving and implementing, which happens in December. Our budget timelines, then, what are our key touchpoints with council? Well, you are here on April 23rd to do our budget planning deliberation. However, we do have some key touchpoints on the screen. You can see them, all of the dates, starting with June and July, when we'll be coming back for capital deliberations, and then October through November, when we will be coming back to talk about our operating budget. Following that, we do have a couple of regular council meetings, including rate bylaw readings and budget approval that will take place in November and December. And just a reminder that by law, we must pass a budget before December 31st. It's important to recognize, though, that for administration, for this, for this budget to be considered successful, we're not measuring success this year by passing a budget by December 31st. In order for this to be a successful budget, it has to inspire the confidence of council that this is a sound plan for bringing forth their strategic vision for the city. So that's primarily why we've established the touchpoints that we have throughout the Under the Municipal Government Act, we have two, technically have two budgets. We have an operating budget and a capital budget. An operating budget is more akin to your traditional income statement, highlighting the city's annual revenues and expenses. When we refer to budget gap, just as a note, when we talk about budget gap, we are referring specifically to the operating budget, and we're talking specifically about those operations that we consider part of our municipal budget, which we will talk about the segments in a future slide. The approved operating budget includes all the authorized spending, which has an expiration date at the end of the budget cycle. Capital budgets, by contrast, identify key capital and infrastructure projects, such as the rehabilitation of roads and trails and the purchase of new rec facilities. Unlike the municipal operating budget, capital budgets do not expire at the end of the year, but carry on to the end of the project. In addition, a funding source must be identified for all capital projects. The city further classifies those budgets as follows. The first tier is the base operating budget, or on the capital side is the sustaining capital budget. Those are part of the first tier, and they represent the maintaining of status quo services. So this is what we consider to be required in order to meet our current service levels for the city. This is typically established through a review of prior year budgets and spending trends, and then adjusted for inflation. The other considerations with the status quo budget will be, is status quo still status quo? And what we'll be looking at there is the application of efficiency targets as well as service level reductions in order to realign our finances towards areas of higher value. The second tier is what we're calling operating initiatives, new operating initiatives, or on the capital side, growth capital. This is how the city intends to invest its time and finances to introduce new services, new programs, and new capital infrastructure for the city. This is typically tied to council's strategic plan, and thus, this becomes a primary focus of our deliberations over the rest of the year. In tier three, we do have other items as well on the operating side, and most of these are related to accounting adjustments, amortization, interest, and those kind of things. Typically, they are driven by decisions that are made in tier one and tier two, and play a supporting role in other decisions and are not typically highlighted individually on their own. Looking then at our financial segments, so it's important to recognize that the City of Medicine Hat has a diverse set of activities that it engages in, and more diverse than most municipalities. For the purposes of understanding financial performance of its activities, the city has split its operations into distinct business units. When we represent the budget to you this year, you will see an operating and capital budget for each business unit. Each business unit has distinct revenue sources and decisions council must approve as a part of the budget. The first business unit is municipal. The municipal unit is the business unit, sorry, the municipal unit is in the business of improving the quality of life for its residents by providing governance, safety, roads, amenities, and facilities that residents rely on for their daily lives. Primary funding sources for the municipal business unit are property taxes, and it operates on a cost recovery model. The second is land development and real estate. Land development and real estate purchases land and develops it in the city for sale. Revenues are typically driven by the real estate market. The third is rate-based utilities, and the operating segments under rate-based utilities include water, sewer, solid waste, electric distribution, and gas distribution. Rates are set using the Alberta Utilities Commission rate-making principles that establish the formula for calculating utility rates. The fourth is energy production, and the operating segments within energy production include electric generation and gas production. This is essentially the group that generates electricity and supplies gas for the city. Rates are driven by market forces and therefore have a greater degree of risk and reward for the city. When we talk about budgeting, we can't talk about budgeting without talking about financial reserves. The city has financial reserves, and what are the purposes of those reserves? Why do we have reserves for the city? Well, there's a number of good reasons why a city would require financial Well, there's a number of good reasons why a city would require financial reserves, and we'll go through some of those here, and they're up on the slide for you to see. The first one is that reserves help to support asset planning. The City of Medicine Hat invests close to $110 million every year into capital projects. Capital is expensive, and the timing of cash flow is often lumpy. It's prudent, therefore, for us to store funds away every year to help pay for capital when it arises, as opposed to expecting residents to pay those costs as they arise. For example, if you owned a condo and your condo board expected to have to replace the roof 20 years from now, you would either have the choice of starting to collect condo fees now and putting them away into a reserve to pay for that roof repair in the future, or you could expect your condo residents to pay the price of the new roof in 20 years in one lump sum. Typically, the former example is more achievable by the average condo owner, and in the same principle applies for residents in a city as well. So the city does the same thing with reserves. We put money into a reserve in order to pay for future capital needs. The second one here is that it helps the city to grow. Beyond our basic asset planning, the city also provides, the reserve also provides an opportunity for the city to expand its services, amenities, neighborhoods, and much more, to improve the life of quality for its residents. Reserves afford the ability of council to designate funds for future projects. The third one is providing a contingency. So reserves provide a contingency for the city. As we mentioned before, cities are not allowed to run deficits. So what do cities do in years when they do not have enough money to cover a deficit? They utilize their reserves. This is our savings. In the City of Medicine Hat, we have been working hard to close that budget gap. However, even with a closed gap, there's still the possibility that the city could reach an operational deficit in any given year due to unexpected causes, such as an unusually bad investment year, damages due to a storm that we would have to pay a deductible on, or an unusually snowy winter resulting in higher-than-expected snow removal. Reserves also help us to offset our liabilities. It's important to remember that reserves only represent one half of the balance sheet. The city also has liabilities as well. At the end of 2023, the city had over $770 million in financial liabilities, and that only includes liabilities that show up on the financial statement. It doesn't include things such as the future costs to replace our aging infrastructure or the energy transition. One way that the city tries to communicate its future liabilities is by restricting funds for future use within its reserves. As a part of this year's budget, we will be recommending the designation of reserves to help pay for some of those larger future costs that we are seeing on the horizon. The next one here is that it helps to reduce city debt. Debt is a lot more expensive than it was four years ago, as we will demonstrate later. With the cost of debt going up, utilizing reserves can help to reduce the burden on future generations for debt principal and interest payments and help to lower taxes. Reserves also provide the ability for the city to plan for steady predictable tax increases for the city as opposed to drastic increases like what other municipalities are experiencing right now. This help, the reason that this reserves help in this way is because that the city is able to weather the storm of some of those fluctuations that are happening in inflation and catch up revenues over a longer time horizon. The next one is, and the final one that we'll mention is that it helps to reduce the budget gap. And the main way that it does that is, as some might know, that the reserves that we have are invested, and as we invest those reserves, we earn investment income. And that investment income flows to our municipality, helps to offset our budget gap, thus reducing property taxes for the city. It's important to recognize here that in every way, our reserves, the benefit of our reserves flows back to the city residents. This chart here was meant to describe how earnings flow within the city. So we know that our city has these business units that we mentioned before, energy production, rate-based utilities, and land development and real estate. What do we do with the earnings that we get from those business units? Well, earnings from these business units will flow into our centralized reserves at year end. Those earnings are designated to one of three reserves through a predefined distribution model. Operating reserves are used primarily for contingency purposes, whereas capital funds are used to help fund future capital projects, as we mentioned in the previous slide. The final one here is heritage savings reserves, which is considered a perpetual endowment fund to continue to provide benefits for the community into future generations. The heritage savings reserve is protected against the time value of money by adjusting for inflation. The only funds by law, by our own city bylaws that we are able to access out of the heritage reserves are those investment earnings that exceed the investment earnings that would otherwise come from an amount equivalent to the Consumer Price Index for Alberta. So what do we do with these funds once they enter into the reserves? Well, they have some intended uses. The first one is to help pay for things within the municipality. We've already mentioned that investment earnings flow to the city as revenue that helps to offset the budget gap. But also, a lot of capital purchases within the city are paid for using that reserve as well. And finally, budget gap coverage, as we mentioned before. The intended use also, the second one here is for growth opportunities. So this could be for new facilities, new programs or services, or new revenue streams to help earn income for the city. And the third is contingencies, which we mentioned before, but would also include things like setting up funds for energy transition or for abandonments and reclamation. Again, in all three circumstances, the ultimate benefactor of these earnings are the residents of Medicine Hat. Typically, when we discuss the municipal budget gap, one thing that gets lost in translation is how much our municipality actually benefits from our business units and investment earnings. As we mentioned before, the municipal budget gap is really a measure of how much we're dipping into savings to pay for that operational budget gap. But there are things that are not showing up when we talk about the municipal budget gap, and so we wanted to highlight some of those things for you so that as a council, you are aware of the ways that our business earnings and investment earnings impact our municipality. So there are two things in particular that do not show up in the municipal budget gap discussion. The first one is in-year earnings. So earnings that are not necessarily savings from prior year reserves, but funds that we earn in the same year. They're current earnings that flow directly into the municipality. This would include things such as our net investment income, as we mentioned before. And that is the primary one here. We're going to discuss the business unit dividends and heritage reserve a little bit later as well. However, the intention behind the business unit dividends is that these are earnings from our business units that are flowing directly to the municipality in the same year that they're earned. So in this way, when we talk about municipal budget gap, we're not talking about dipping into savings, but finding solutions within our current year earnings. The second one that I want to mention here is capital.
Excuse me. I see that Mayor Clark has a question. So if we could just pause for a moment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and through the, yes, thank you very much. And through the chair. I'm just, this is back to heritage savings. I know you have a separate slide on heritage savings reserve. So I have a few more questions. But on page six of the triannual report, it says that there's a, in the, I think it's financial activities, there's a favorable variance as a result of lower-than-budgeted transfers to the heritage reserve, and I'm just wondering why those transfers were lower and also how that decision was made. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Mayor Clark, are you referring to the 2023 December report?
The one that we just, that just came to council tonight, and, or sorry, last night, and then to Audit Committee on April 4th, or sorry, April 3rd, City of Medicine Hat Management Report Summary for the period of December 31st, 2023. Period ending December 31st, 2023.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Yeah, so what ends up happening is, as Erin mentioned, when we earn investment earnings, we earn it on all of our investments. Some of those investment income will then get allocated to our heritage savings reserve based on the amount that is in that reserve. So depending on how our investments did over the year, we allocate a portion of that to our NGPR business unit or our gas production business unit, our municipal tax-supported business unit, and then to our heritage savings reserve. So based on how we budgeted of the interest amount that was going to go into that reserve, it didn't meet that budget expectation, and so a lower amount was transferred into that heritage savings reserve.
I thought we did well on our investments this year.
Yes, we did. However, we did budget higher than what we expected to come out. So we did do well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Continue, please. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for the question. And just to give a little bit of an indication of what you're seeing on the screen, this is a forecast. These are projections. This is just to provide an illustration of what we're anticipating that picture might look like for the period of 2024 through 2029. However, things may change as we go through the budget year as well. So the one that I was going to mention here is the capital. So capital, like we mentioned before, does not factor into our municipal budget gap because it's not a part of the operating budget. It's a part of the capital budget. It's a funding source on the capital side. And so this is one of the primary areas where oftentimes it's lost in translation with the municipal budget gap, the way that the city benefits from its municipal, or sorry, from its business units. So what we're anticipating then over the 24 to 29 horizon is that, on average, the city would benefit about $47.7 million from its business and investments over that period, which would be the equivalent of a 53% tax increase. So we acknowledge through this that our city is still very reliant on its business units, that there is a significant exposure to, and risk, if you will, to our business units. And so as we're looking at this one, we do want to, I realize this is one of the questions that, you know, we wanted to ask to council to get a bit of an understanding of what your understanding is of our reliance on our business units. So the first question that we're going to pose to council for the vote, so you can take a look at your email and click on that first link, is the question, "Does council support the strategy to reduce the city's reliance on non-sustainable business and investment earnings over the long run?" And just so that you can see how this is going to show up, if it will show up. I think we're broken. Okay, there we go. Thank you. And again, this is just to gain a gauge. There's nothing in this that, you're not voting on anything. This is just to gain an understanding of where everyone is at with this particular issue. And we will wait for all of the responses to be submitted and then open the floor.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mayor Clark.
Thank you through the chair. I'm, I find that this question is a little bit leading because energy will always be needed. And if we adapt appropriately, are, is energy a non-sustainable business? Like, I know right now, it's gas, and natural gas-generated electricity, but people are always going to need electricity. So if we transition appropriately, is it reliance on non-sustainable business? And also, investment earnings, like that is lumped in with the business. And so the Heritage Fund was specifically designed, my understanding is specifically designed, to offset reliance on sustainable business? Like, to make sure that future generations benefited from our having those energy businesses over the year? So I'm a little bit confused about why those two things, one being implemented to mitigate the other, why they would be included in the same question? Because couldn't we use investment earnings to, which is what the Heritage Fund was designed to, decrease our reliance on non-sustainable business?
Those are great questions. And the purpose of today's discussion, to weed out some of those nuances. So thank you for, thank you for the questions. The reason that we brought together business and investment earnings is to acknowledge that the reason that we have investment earnings is because of the fact that we have business units. Other municipalities do not have the opportunity to benefit the way that we do from investment earnings and from our reserves, the way that we do because of our business earnings. So the investment component is a derivative of the business, and certainly, one of those long-term strategies could be continued use of that heritage endowment as one of those offsetting strategies. However, it's important to recognize as well that investment earnings, by and large, right now, we haven't even tapped into those heritage savings earnings. And we're still clearing, I think, from the previous slide, I don't know if this is going to work, but I think it was somewhere around $14 million on average that we're expected to earn from those investment earnings per year. So that's the connection between business and investment earnings that was intended. I realize that the question may be a bit leading, but I'm looking forward more to the discussion than the actual vote itself. So certainly can weed out some of those things in the discussion. I think we, do we have seven?
May I have a follow-up? Counselor McRogan?
Yeah, go ahead, Mayor Clark.
Yes, thank you, and I appreciate your explanation that the investment earnings right now are a derivative or as a result of our energy earnings. But that is why I thought we were trying to get the principal up to a point where we would have a sustainable endowment to the municipal side that at a certain point, when we have enough money in there, we won't be reliant on our energy income to sustain that reliable endowment because it'll just be the interest on the principal.
I believe that would be one of the, one of the strategies that we could implement to reduce our reliance on business and investment earnings.
Counselor Knodel.
Thank you through the chair. So I think that as I'm reading this, I just, I also would like to just clarify my understanding. The way that I read this was anything that is not, anything that is not costing, or that is costing us money in a negative way, that doesn't make sense. that doesn't make sense. I think I'm going to pass and let myself process. I'll come back.
Counselor Robbins?
Yeah, I guess I had the same issue as Mayor Clark, actually about the word "non-sustainable business" because Medicine Hat's been in this business since, I think you started with the number, or the years, like how many, over 100 years, right? And so it seems to me, 100-year business is pretty sustainable. It's just, how do we sustain it? So I don't think that, when I read the question, how likely is council to support a strategy to reduce the city's reliance on non-sustainable business? Well, I hope that we're not, because we have a sustainable business if we govern it correctly and steward it correctly. That's, so I understand what Mayor Clark was saying about that, that it is a bit of a leading question, but I understand the purpose of it is to spur exactly this kind of discussion.
Managing Director Agard?
Yeah, through the chair. I love the discussion. And in terms of both of those sources of revenues, they're extremely volatile, year over year. And the question is, what is the level that we can rely on year after year after year without putting our municipality or operations at risk? So in other words, we're not relying on the peaks of revenues, either from investments or business, but is, what is that sustainable? So the, the question is really referring to, again, weaning ourselves off of the non-sustainable portion of either investment or non-sustainable business income. And that's the heart of the question, if that makes sense.
Thank you. Go ahead. And then after this, I think I see a lot of people rooting for the snacks. Maybe we'll take a 15-minute break here after this.
I, I think that the way you've just articulated that makes a lot of sense. That is the peaks and valleys that we're trying to avoid, but not seeing the business doesn't have value and creates this wonderful opportunity that Medicine Hat has. But you're right, if we're in a peak period, well, like, I'll just break it back to household income, right? If you're in a peak period of incoming, you don't plan for the future, then you're doomed to fail from the beginning. And so I, I still have a bit of a wording with, issue with the wording of the question, but it's, when you describe it as peaks and valleys, and that's what we're trying to avoid, not relying on one and not losing it all in another, that would be something I would very likely support.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Can I just add, we're also doing the energy business review currently, which may result in a different pricing mechanism. For example, a cost-plus approach would definitely reduce the earnings potential of the energy business unit. There's also market restructuring going on right now, which may lead to lower revenues coming from that business unit.
Thank you. Is this a natural pause break, do you think, City Manager? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
To the Acting Chair, McGrogan, if I could just quickly, I weigh into the conversation. I think the communication thus far is accurate. I mean, from the standpoint of what I read before me is, is more around the reduction on the reliance rather than the removal or, or retirement of our reliance. There, there will always be some level, but I, I agree the peak and valleys, and I've lived through those in my years around this table, and they, they were frightening at times where what we've, let's put it this way, what we've seen these last number of years have been the peaks, like we've never seen, and, and I've never seen. And so it, it portrays an unrealistic expectation. And so I think the question is prudent, because it says, and I don't think anyone's disagreeing, but I, I think it, it just says, with uncertainty and, and some level of certainty around the retirement of fossil-based business units, based on outside pressures, what, what is going to be our appetite to, to sustain that long-term? And, and creating an, an environment where we are reducing that reliance will not only be necessary, but, but will be the lifeline of, of how we run our business. I, I'm certain of that going into the future. So I think it's a good question. It's all over the place, as we can see. And, but as you said, this is just fodder for a good conversation, so I appreciate that.
Mayor Clark has your question, or, or sorry, has a question.
Thank you through the chair. I'm also happy to have this question answered after the break or at some later time, because I feel like maybe I'm putting someone on the spot. But Travis mentioned market reorganization or adjustments. I think that's not what he said. He said it smarter. But just wondering what that exactly means.
Yeah, in that regards, currently, the ISO is looking at a market restructuring. They're looking at adjusting the energy market, which could have potential impacts on the revenues of the business unit. There's a framework that's being discussed right now, and they're looking to develop that over the next six months with potential implementation into 2026.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Vandeek.
Sorry, I thought I, through the chair, better way in, because everybody else has. The way I view this question is very much the idea of mealtime. So you always have to plan for supper, and sometimes you also have dessert, but you don't always have dessert. And you shouldn't count on it. And it's nice to have it when you have it in the house or you have the money to run out and bet, get something special for your family or for a special occasion. But you shouldn't be expecting that you're going to have dessert every night after supper, at least not in my household. And, and so it's the same thing. We, we need to plan for nutrition to be met and a regular meal, but we can't always think there's going to be dessert after either. It's nice to have, but not always there.
Great time for a 15-minute recess. Okay, let's do 5:20. If we could all be back here for 5:20, please.
People ready to go? Thanks so much for trying to be back on time, trying so hard. Okay, so we might as well just continue with the presentation and looking forward to it.
One final section before we turn off of budgeting 101. I do want to talk about our rate-based utilities because this is a unique funding model. When we talk about our energy production or our land development, both of these are largely driven by market forces, but our rate-based utilities get their name because of the way that we establish their rates. Utility rates present a unique economic challenge since most utility providers have a natural monopoly over the utilities for their region. There would be negative economic or environmental impacts if there were to be, say, two sets of wires or poles or pipelines delivering customers in order to encourage competition, and so this forms a natural monopoly. The Alberta Utilities Commission, also known as AUC, seeks to protect customers from excess prices by regulating how much return on equity a utility is allowed to earn from its rates. As a city, as such, the city utility rates are governed by city council and align with the AUC rate-making principles that establish the formula for calculating our rates. For the city, the key to optimizing earnings is to ensure that we are not over-leveraging or under-leveraging debt on our rate-based utilities. Too much debt means that more of the city's return goes to pay for debt and interest, but too little debt means that the city is over-contributed, which can result in a less than optimum return on asset. The primary ways that the city can optimize these debt-to-equity ratios is how we budget our rates and how we allocate capital for capital projects, either by using equity, which is internal cash, or issuing debt. Moving on then, the next section that we want to look at is the environmental scan and fiscal outlook. This is where we're going to show council what we're seeing happening in the environment, and we're going to point to some key things throughout this section. We are living in a post-pandemic environment. This has posed many challenges for the municipality. In our opening remarks, we mentioned a number of the issues that municipalities are facing, such as inflation and aging infrastructure and population growth. Now, we want to illustrate for you some of the impacts and how they are specifically impacting Medicine Hat. Some of the key items that we have noted here that we want to go through are the property tax rate freeze from 2020 to 2022 that happened during the pandemic has resulted in foregone revenue for the city. The second one is reducing municipal funding from the province, an increased demand for community support, inflationary pressures, higher interest rates, and then a changing energy landscape.
During the pandemic- Excuse me, can I just, just so you went back to that last slide, I'm just curious, the 7.5 million is based on what, what was that, like 4% each year that was foregone? Or what was the number that was used to come to 7.5?
Correct. So this 7.5 figure was presented to council in the previous key budget assumption package that we had provided. The 7.5 million is calculated on the budgeted increase of 4% per year, which we budgeted prior to the pandemic. And then during the pandemic in 2020 and 2021, we reduced that to zero in order to help with affordability issues in our city and then further reduce 2021 to 2.5%, down from four. So our estimated impact is an annual ongoing loss of revenue of about 7.5 million as a result of those reductions. So during the pandemic, we were not the only ones who made that choice. It was necessary at the time in order to help people who were struggling with the impacts of the pandemic. But as a result of these increases, we are also seeing that costs have not slowed down. There is increased inflation, reduced government funding and other pressures that are forcing the city to have a very difficult situation because on the one hand, we've reduced revenues, and on the other side, we're seeing increasing, increased costs. In this slide, we've compared property tax increases from six comparator cities, Lethbridge, Red Deer, Edmonton, Calgary, St. Albert, and Airdrie. And as you can see, during the pandemic, we all made the same move. We all reduced property taxes at that time. However, in the same way, all of these same municipalities are now increasing their property tax rates in order to make up for the lost revenue and the increase of cost. For example, Airdrie announced an increase to property taxes in 2024 of 9.7%. In 2024, Medicine Hat had the lowest planned tax increase and is in the middle of the pack when it comes to tax increases since the pandemic. What we're trying to iterate with this message is that the city of Medicine Hat has done a good job at remaining relatively competitive with other cities when it comes to property tax increases since the pandemic. We're also indicating that the city's annual tax revenue is about $7.5 million lower than it would be today due to the taxpayer relief efforts during the pandemic. And when you consider that the budget gap for 2024 is somewhere around $7 million, this means that but for these reductions, we may not have a budget gap going into 2024. As we look to '25, '26, we just have to be cognizant of the fact that other cities are also raising taxes at this time after reducing or freezing taxes during the pandemic to help taxpayers. On this slide, we're looking, we just looked at the property tax side. Now, we're looking at our utility rates, and we're doing a comparison with Calgary, Lethbridge, Edmonton, and Red Deer on what the average monthly residential utility bill looks like. So our city has done, is one of the more economic places to live. We've done a good job at providing excellent facilities at a low cost of living. In 2023, our billing rates for utilities were on average 10% lower than Calgary, Lethbridge, Edmonton, and Red Deer, even before considering the cost pressure relief provided to households last year. With the cost pressure relief payments included, Medicine Hat was on average 26% lower than comparative cities. Looking towards intergovernmental transfers then, on March 27, 2024, the mayor of Edmonton put forward a letter to the province of Alberta that discusses the city's financial struggles specifically related to policy decisions made by the government of Alberta. In that letter, many of the things that are impacting Edmonton are also impacting the city of Medicine Hat. This slide was provided to council during the 2024 budget update, but has been updated to include some estimates for 2024. On the operate, just to be clear, when we're looking at intergovernmental transfers, as we said, there is an operating and a capital budget. What we're looking at here are those funds received for the purposes of operating on the operating side of the budget. On the operating side, provincial policy decisions since 2019 are anticipated to have resulted in an opportunity cost for the city of approximately $1.8 million annually by 2024. Some of the decisions that the Alberta government has made that have impacted the city include, in 2019, the province announced it was to reduce the property tax it paid for provincial buildings owned within city limits to half of the assessable property tax value. In 2019, the province also announced that it would be changing its own share of fine revenue from 30% to 40%, reducing the portion that municipalities get to keep when fines are issued within city limits. As well as in 2022, the province decided to no longer provide a preferred interest rate on debt to municipalities, resulting in an estimated increase of about 0.7% of interest on average. On the capital side then, the provincial government provides two primary sources. I shouldn't say provincial government. The local government fiscal framework is a provincial government source. Canada Community Building Fund is a federal government source that is administered through the province. Through these two programs, what we are seeing is that for the last 10 years, we've averaged about $15.3 million on average from these two programs. And within the next three years, between '23 and '26, the allocations from these programs should not exceed $13.6 million. This results on average in a reduction, specifically in the provincial funding, of about 21% for that LGFF component there. It's also worth noting that a local government fiscal framework was previously known as the Municipal Sustainability Initiative, or MSI. When we, the change in the formula from MSI to LGFF has tied the amount of money that we receive as a city to the federal, or sorry, the provincial government's revenues. So as revenues go up within the Alberta province, so will our allocations. However, as province revenues go down, so will our allocations for capital. And it happens to be that we locked in to this program at a time where Alberta provincial revenues were at an unprecedented high on the back of non-renewable resource revenues. And so there is a significant downside risk to our capital funding from the province. Looking then at our community grants, the city's annual own-source grant payments increased significantly in 2023 when compared to 2019, and this is primarily tied to two requests from organizations such as Halo and the Curling Club. But we've also seen requests come forward from Medicine Hat Public Library and Medicine Hat Stampede amongst others. Some of the requests coming forward call into question whether this is a provincial or municipal responsibility. Application for major grant programs such as the Family and Community Support Services, or FCSS, grant, which is a provincially funded grant that the city administers, have increased significantly somewhere around 81% since 2019, while funding from the province has remained relatively stable. It's another trend that we're seeing in the municipal landscape that the- that the responsibility and obligation of the municipality to fund community organizations seems to be increasing. Flipping over to our inflation. We have shown a comparison of some key items within the city, both from 2019 and 2023, to show what that four-year increase in inflation looks like. The City of Medicine Hat is no exception to the inflationary pressures that we have all been experiencing. This chart shows the difference in costs between 2019 and 2023. If the city were experiencing the typical Bank of Canada targeted inflation of 2% per year in between 2019 and 2023, we would expect to see an increase in costs of approximately 8.2%. That's 2% compounded over four years. However, many of the costs that the city has experienced over the past four years have increased well over 20%, some as high as 137% when it comes to the cost of steel pipe. And this is quite significant when you think about the utilization of some of, how often we replace some of these items. Just as an example for you, the water and sewer mains, we replace approximately 2,350 meters per year. So the increase in costs that you see on the screen would amount to about a $7.7 million increase to cost for the city on an annual basis, which is quite significant. Another, another pressure that we're seeing is with regard to information technology. Costs have increased in this area as a result of support for, after the pandemic, for virtual meeting rooms and remote work. But what we're seeing as well from our software providers is that most of them are moving towards pure cloud-based services, which is shifting costs which would traditionally be in our capital budget onto our operating budget. And this is having a multimillion-dollar impact on the city's bottom line. Looking at borrowing interest rates then. We've again compared 2019 to our current position, which is the rates as of April 15, 2024. The interest rates are no exception to the inflationary pressures that we've been experiencing. In an effort to curb inflation and spending, the Bank of Canada has raised its overnight rates since the pandemic, resulting in an increase of over 95% to our interest rates, some as high as 137%. Just as a comparator, in our 2023 annual financial statement, our average annual interest rate was 3.48%. So any, this is just a note as we go into the new budget cycle, that debt costs more. And it's, it's going to cost more than what we are used to paying on average. Okay. Moving away from the environmental scan to talk a little bit more about what our situation looks like as a city. As we mentioned in the opening remarks, our city is in a good place financially to start this budget cycle. The City of Medicine Hat currently is sitting with a net financial asset position of $27.5 million, an increase of $38.9 million since 2022. I personally really like the net debt calculation. I think that it's a very good indicator for a public government. What the net financial debt number indicates, if we were to be in a net financial debt position, what that would indicate is that the city needs to raise future revenues to pay for things that it's already purchased. So it's, it's quite that simple. So in this case, we are actually in a surplus position, which means that in theory, we could pay off all of our debts and still have $27.5 million left over. So this is, this is a good indicator. And just to keep in mind as well that it's very rare for an entity to be in a net financial asset position within a public government setting. Typically, some level of financial debt is appropriate because the things that we purchase, for example, a recreational facility, will be used by future generations. And so it makes sense that we would have some financial debt that we would raise future revenues for in order to pay. So this is, this is, this shows that we are in a good financial position. Looking then towards-
Excuse me, yeah. Counselor Robbins has a question.
You look like you were just waiting for a question and I did have one. Are you able to go back to that screen?
Yes.
Last screen? So I remember during the campaign, there's a report card that's available online about municipalities. And the only area that Medicine Hat seemed to have any sort of risk was in the income to debt ratio. Are you saying that by this change, that that will probably change on our next report card? If I'm understanding that correctly?
You're referring to the, our debt to revenue ratio?
Right.
The Municipal Government Act, that, that ratio?
Right.
So we will show, in future, we'll, we'll kind of show that picture. But what we're seeing with the debt to revenue ratio is that as a result of declining energy revenues over the next little while, that that's going to put some downward pressure on that debt to revenue ratio. So with, with debt remaining relatively stable, that is going to put us into a bit of a sensitive position going into the next 10, 10 years.
Hey, can I just ask you another question about? Because this is like the positive news of, of this term. And much of it, we're not responsible for, but we were at least able to talk about it publicly, what a success this is. So when there was, in 2022, there was a net debt of $11,410,000. Do you know what it was in previous years to that? Like where was it at its worst? And how long did it take to get to this positive number here?
Go ahead, Managing Director.
Through the chair. Thank you, Counselor Robbins. That's a great question, a great observation. And several years ago, not very many, two or three, we were at approximately a minus $200 million. So you look at that number today, 27 positive, 11 million negative. We were at about a $200 million negative. And that was a number that was consistent over a period of three or four years. When you consider the abandonment obligation we had with our oil and gas properties, didn't, it wasn't exactly, but it did, that minus 200 did reflect the fact that we had an obligation for oil and gas revenues. So I am really pleased at this number. I think it is not only a great, a great indicator that we should be looking at on, to, to consider the health of our organization, but it is also reflective of the business earnings that we've seen over the last few years, as well as the investment strategy and earnings that we've achieved over the last few years as well.
Yeah, I just think that it's like, I don't know how many times I could say it, but to go from $200 million in the negative to $27 million in the positive. And I look forward to 2024 because we'll hear about it again and see where we're at then. I can only imagine with the sort of stewardship we're talking about, that that's going to improve. So some of that, of course, didn't take place entirely within our term here on council. So just congratulations to all of those who've worked hard to, to manage the city into this positive circumstance. I wish that was on the front page of the paper so everyone could see it. But I don't control that. But at least I think we can all say it's pretty impressive. Like beyond pretty impressive, it's quite amazing, actually.
Counselor Hyder and then Counselor Dubinowski.
Thank you. And through the chair, I was, I was just thinking those thoughts, Counselor Ramon. That is a phenomenal achievement to, to have that swing in, in so many ways and in the economy we're in. And yeah, it is a positive thing and wouldn't that be nice too? We are pretty humble and reserved as far as an organization. I find we don't always toot our own horn enough. That's evident. Well done. Like that is a phenomenal achievement. So I just wanted to say that and it is such a positive thing. So congratulations.
Through the chair, just a couple observations. I agree. It, it is a good news story. As Managing Director Egerd said, it wasn't that many years ago where our position was different. I, I will say that a softening or a reduction in that liability side with our utility holdings had to do with some of the, the sales or recovery by selling off or transference of our non-producing or unprofitable liabilities. Those were very strategic decisions made by some previous staff and current staff who, who had the foresight. And, and you know, council sits here and we get to celebrate when it's comfortable and prudent to do so and, and when it's not. But we, we had some very challenging but opportunistic, I guess, opportunities before us that staff were able to activate and council supported in the past, which reduced our liability from the standpoint of abandonment and reclamation in tens, if not 100 million mark. So those are, those are significant pieces to the, to the narrative that we see there. But also, as has been indicated, the business units have produced very well. That's not news to anyone on this council and certainly the community at large. My only cautionary tail in all this is, is celebrate but narrate accordingly. Because my worry is we, I hear people in the public. We, we have some people who communicate out regularly that we're in such a positive net financial situation that we can afford. And, and I'm not going to say simplistically, but simplistically speaking, we can afford to take out of the pot and put elsewhere. But the danger is, as you've indicated, when, during the COVID or pandemic era where I was here and we supported the, as other municipalities did, a zero increase, which, which changed our net financial picture of 7.5 million. But it was the right decision at the time. But in the end, if we start clawing back or pulling back from our pots and redistributing, all we're doing is playing a shell game with ourselves. And so that, that won't. Even though it appears to be an easy or simplistic solution to, to future tax increases, it's not going to be, it would not be sustainable and certainly would very quickly change this report card. So those are just some thoughts I wanted to add to some of the points you made. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for those remarks. It is important to recognize that this is a substantial achievement, especially in light of the fact that other municipalities right now are struggling. However, as we mentioned in the opening remarks, there's a changing landscape when it comes to our energy transition towards that whole side of our business. And that is going to change things substantially. And we are looking at liabilities that aren't even showing up on our financial statement that we need to be thinking about for the future. So it is a good news story, but I appreciate the comment that we do need to kind of take it in stride. If we don't make the right decisions today, this picture couldn't, could be gone tomorrow. Speaking of which, let's look at the financial outlook. That's a great segue. Okay, so looking at the financial outlook then for the future. The following picture does not include, just to note that this picture that we're showing here does not include costs related to energy transition, the energy strategic review, or any of the changes that the provincial government's looking at making that Manager Tookshurad mentioned earlier. It does, it does include however, sorry, it doesn't include facilities for the future either. So these are future considerations that we know for our budget that we need to get to. But what we're showing here is without these, without these items in play. So in 2022 and 2023, the city experienced unprecedented, one-time earnings from its energy production business. During this time, the city provided the largest cost pressure relief program in the city's history, returning $33 million back to ratepayers. By '25, '26, we are anticipating that the earnings from our energy production business unit will drop drastically down to more historical levels. This return to more historic earning levels is driven by a supply response in the electric electricity market as well as an increased cost from carbon pricing. This trend is correlated to the anticipated burn in cash across the city in the years, as indicated in the bottom chart there. To be clear, this does not mean that our earnings, electric production business will be in a cash-negative position. That's not what we're saying. However, as shown earlier, the requirements from our reserve to fund the municipality are greater than the earnings that we're anticipating over that period, which is resulting in that overall pull on cash that you're seeing. Typically, the longer term forecast comes, the longer term a forecast is, the longer, the more uncertainty and the more variability that comes with it. So one thing that we are flagging is that while you do see an increase in our energy business net income anticipated for 2031 to 2034, that this is highly uncertain. This is, this, this becomes even more pronounced when we talk about an electricity market. At this time, due to the, the potential changes to the market structure, political carbon policies and changes in our asset generation mix. So what we're trying to flag here is that in the, in the short term, we're anticipating our earnings to return to more of a average historical level. And the result for the city will be a cash burn between '25 and 2030. So we just have to keep this in mind because if this increase that we're anticipating in energy between 2031 to 2034 doesn't materialize, we could be looking at a perpetual cash burn situation that we'll have to mitigate through our budget planning process.
Just a quick question, if I may. I noticed, this is a minor thing, but I noticed the, you've got land, utility, energy in the legend. But I, unless I'm colorblind, I don't see the blue anywhere in the one on my... Where is land on the, on the chart, I guess?
It's, it's just due to scale. The impact of land is, at this point, that the land department is still working through a bit of a restructuring in their, in their business model. And we anticipate that that will change. However, at this point in time, we're not anticipating a significant amount of net income from the land department.
So you're saying that even if, we can't really even estimate the future value of land, I guess, from a fiscal earnings perspective at this stage?
That's correct, yeah.
City manager?
Through the chair. I'm just wondering if Mr. Redden would like to add some comments?
Sure, through the chair. As mentioned, we're not forecasting anything yet, but I think it's been mentioned here in chambers before that we are conducting a real estate gap analysis at present, which will lead to an underutilized land strategy and a more fulsome land strategy that we hope to deliver by year end and at that time, provide some projections as to where land may fit. Add some blue. Hopefully yes.
Okay. That concludes the environmental scan and fiscal outlook. The next section is fiscal targets. So fiscal targets establish the definition of what the city defines as financially healthy. City, the city seeks to maintain those fiscal targets that we will show you within a 10-year planning horizon. This will be a primary tool in balancing the needs of today with the requirements of tomorrow. The fiscal targets that we have set, and we understand that there are many fiscal targets that we could be looking to provide. And certainly, there are what we consider primary and then secondary fiscal targets. What we're considering to be our primary targets are the municipal budget gap, where our cash holdings are as a, as a city as a whole, our free cash flow or our earnings from our business units, and then our debt to revenue, which is the, the target that Counselor Robbins had indicated earlier. With regard to the municipal budget gap, this, as we mentioned before, results in the amount of funding that we are dipping into savings, let's say, to pay for current year expenses within the municipal budget gap. So it's the annual cash deficit from municipal operations before we use savings in order to, in order to cover the gap. With regard to cash, we are talking about cash as a whole, which includes reserves but is not- but is not merely reserves. The city has cash that it uses for other purposes besides reserves as well. For example, our working capital that we use to pay for operational expenses on our day-to-day business. Sufficient reserve balances allow the city to provide those steady predictable tax increases that we mentioned before. Sufficient reserves are also tied to our goal for affordability for residents. Our goal is to maintain between 570 and 870 million dollars in our cash in bank over that period in order to provide for steady predictable tax increases, as well as to ensure that there's sufficient investment income to support the municipality while also providing the needed funds to help support growth and future needs, such as facilities for the future and energy transition. The free cash flow target that we have is the driver behind ensuring that our cash balances remain steady. This target is tied to addressing community needs and providing excellent service as our business units ensure that we are able to provide the quality of life amenities that medicine hatters are used to enjoying. Based on our forecast model, we anticipate that approximately $38 million in annual free cash flow will be required on average over the 10-year horizon in order to maintain sustainability within the organization. On the debt side, besides earnings, the other way that the city can generate cash is through issuance of debt. Looking at debt to revenue is the opposite side of our earnings, which ensures that we're not becoming too over-levered. This is a, the municipal government act does dictate a certain debt to revenue ratios that cities must abide by. However, the city policy is that we would maintain only 70% of that MGA limit. So these establish the fiscal targets that we have for our budget cycle and for the 10-year planning horizon that we're looking at during the 2526 budget. And I didn't mention earlier, but the target for our municipal budget gap solution is to balance by 2026. It should be noted, though, that we are aware that in order to meet these targets, there are certain risks and uncertainties that are on the horizon that we need to take into consideration as we go into planning. Some of those things include the costs related to the opportunities surrounding facilities for the future, what happens with the energy business review, costs related to energy transition, asset retirement obligations or abandonments, and ad hoc requests for funding that come forward from external parties. Other risks that we are aware of are things like market volatility, both within our investment portfolio and the market volatility with regard to our electric generation and further reductions to provincial funding. That was the shortest section of the whole thing.
So if I may, just a question on your shortest section. So the uncertainties, and we've talked about this in other meetings in the past, and is there a way to make these uncertainties a little more certain, I guess, by, I know there was some talk, for instance, of requests for funding from external parties, building a framework around it, and I think Councilor Robbins was trying to get some, a number of us were. And there's, just looking at some of these asset retirement obligations, I guess, on a scale of one to 10, can we move it from, if it's a one to 10 of uncertain, like where are we on a scale of, and how can we make it more predictable, I guess, is my question? That might not be a question for you.
There's certainly things on that list that we have more certainty of and some that don't. I'll let my colleagues respond, but things, for example, like asset retirement obligations, we do have a indicator of what that obligation will look like from our financial statements. We're obligated to estimate that amount. However, the thing that is uncertain with it is oftentimes the cash flow component of that. Other ones, such as, you mentioned, we are working on frameworks around funding from external parties. We do have some intentions to put some numbers around facilities for the future over the budget cycle, as well as some of these ones, I think, like energy business review, we don't have as much certainty over. But we do intend as well, as Will mentioned later in the presentation, to come back with some numbers around energy transition. So what we're trying to indicate with these initial targets is that we do have some uncertainties and risks. And to your point, over the course of the budget cycle, we're trying to get a better handle on what those costs look like so that they're not as uncertain.
Yeah, thank you. And I just, of course, we all recall the 2024 budget amendments, the exercise we went through, and the list of things, I guess, that council approved through the year that did impact our bottom line. And I'm just wondering if there's, you know, if we could just continue to work on making that, I guess, a less frequent activity so we're planning more ahead. And part of that, I think, is that framework around ad hoc costs. So thanks.
City manager?
Thank you, through the chair. We really understood how unfortunate that was to have the continual budget amendments. So through the budget process, we're making sure that we're being extremely mindful of how we're planning. And we can't say that there will never be amendments because obviously things come up from time to time, but we are doing our best to make sure that we are meeting the needs through this budget process so that they're as minimal as possible.
Thank you.
And then maybe if I can add a few comments around the energy risk side. Obviously, it's probably one of the largest, if not the largest, risk that we face. Energy transition potentially could cost 500 million plus. We're looking at all different routes to pursue and looking at some optionality and ways we can ensure that this happens the most economical way for the city. I think it's been mentioned in the past, you know, there's different scenarios that could come from it, from us completely transitioning our fleet to a renewable fleet or a low-carbon fleet. There could also be the case, in the worst-case scenario, where we can't be competitive with the common capital and how the market looks, and we may look at potentially changing how we interact with the, with the, with the tie, the intertie to city mess that. So we're definitely looking at all those options, and it does bring us risk, as you seen, the cash burn is negative over the short term. And if that future doesn't, doesn't come to fruition as we forecasted, or as the energy transition plays out, that doesn't come to fruition, then we will look at potentially having a longer cash burn that could be shown on that chart.
Yeah, thank you. And I think that's really important for the community to understand is, you know, everybody sees the big bank account and they, they think that that's, you know, that we're rolling in cash, but we also have all of these risks that could, I guess, happen at any time. And energy transition definitely is one of them. So I don't know if there's a better way to tell that story that, you know, that these reserves that we have are there for a good reason. So I don't, and other communities don't have some of these risks that we have, and that's the other piece of this, right? So anyway, thank you.
Just to your comment, we are, we'll show this on a later slide as well, but one of the things that we're trying to do to create better visibility on some of those things is by coming forward with some recommendations to set aside funding in our reserves to say this money is for energy transition, this money is for abandonment, so that we can create greater visibility of what our intentions are of how we're going to utilize those funds. Okay, moving on to our key budget assumptions, which is the last section of the deliberations today. The key budget assumptions is where city administration will assume certain inflationary targets, capital needs, investment growth opportunities, et cetera. We will set, we'll set some assumptions that then are utilized by the organization to help plan the budget. They'll help build their budget based on those assumptions. So this is really where, now that we've discussed more of the philosophical approach and the targets that we are going to maintain within, this is that plan of where we think that we're going to need to go. However, we do need to indicate, as we have before, that this is just preliminary, and things will change as we go through the budget cycle, as we define things further for energy transition, facilities for the future, all of those items, things are bound to change. But at this point, this is the direction that we're directing the organization to begin the budgeting process. Just an iteration as well, that I just want to bring back up those budget commitments here, just as a reminder that, you know, as we look at these key budget assumptions, these are really built with these commitments in mind. So we're planning with the intention of how are we going to meet these commitments to the community, and those are reflected in the numbers that we're about to share. So to start with some highlights then, what are some highlights about the key budget assumptions that we've set? Our preliminary assumptions are looking at solving the municipal budget gap or providing a budget gap solution by 2026. And just to be clear, what that means is that we will stop dipping into reserves, stop dipping into our savings by the end of 2026 in order to pay for current year expenses within our municipality. In order to do this, this is going to call for a combination of revenue increases and cost reductions. So three highlights for how we are intending to go about this budget gap solution. First is $8 million in business unit dividends and heritage savings reserve funding. To be clear, that's 3 million of business unit dividends and 5 million from the heritage savings reserve. The funding for heritage savings reserve, we will talk about in a little bit more detail in a future slide. The first source here being business unit dividends, and to be clear, this is current year earnings from our energy production, rate-based utilities, and land development and real estate business units. These funds would be transferred to the municipality to help reduce the gap. The second that we mentioned here is heritage savings reserve, and we'll get into that one in a little bit more detail a little bit later. The second one is a $2 million target for service level reduction and efficiency savings. So one of the corporate strategic objectives that our executive leadership has set for this year calls for an improvement to stakeholders' satisfaction by ensuring clear alignment, understanding, and awareness of expected service levels. One of the key outcomes of that objective is to document the various external services provided by operational departments and their corresponding service levels. As a part of this work of documenting service levels, it would be the commitment of administration to identify potential areas where service level reductions could be made with minimal impact to city residents and bring that forward to council for decision by the end of 2026. The third item here is a 4.9% annual tax increase in '25 and '26, which would also include a 0.5% increase related to growth. And again, we'll talk a little bit more about that number in future slides. The second thing that we want to highlight here in regard to our key budget assumptions are projected funding. So including solving the budget gap, we are looking at funding for our investment as well as investing in, to replenish our existing assets, as well as to expand and provide new services and amenities for the community that they really need. So the first item here is $178.5 million. Again, this is a preliminary projection of our, that we are using to direct the departments in how they're planning their capital budgets. So this number, again, could change, but this is the starting point that we've identified. This 178.5 million is a 17.2% increase from the original 2023-2024 budget the council approved, and a 12.8% increase over the last seven years of historical spend. Although the budget has increased, it's anticipated that this increase will merely be used to offset the cost of inflation, which in the previous section we indicated, most of those examples that we provided are capital in nature. So we are anticipating that the 178 or the 17.2% increase will merely be used to offset some of those costs and continue to sustain our assets at a similar level to previous years. The second item here is a $37.4 million growth capital budget. This represents an 8.4% increase over the '23-24 budget. And to be, just to iterate, the growth capital is that, are those new capital investments that are tied to council strategic initiatives? So this is new funding invested in council strategic priorities. And then the final one here is $5 million in new operating initiatives. So over the '25-26 budget, we intend to invest $5 million in council strategic priorities for new programs and new services within the city. I don't have a comparator for that one because we haven't really provided a figure for that in the past, but this is a new way that we're trying to capture that and talk about it. So.
If I may, Councilor McGrogan?
Go ahead, Mayor Clark.
Thank you. Through the chair, 5 million in new operating initiatives invested in council strategic priorities in 2025 and 2026. I'm just wondering if you could specify what those are and whether they're coming from council strategic plan or the corporate strategic plan?
Thank you for the question. So new operating initiatives are tied to new programs or new services that the city could implement. This is an earmark for council's decision. We're splitting it up in this way so that it can be identified and talked about with this council. So these are items that will come back to this council for decision. They are tied to a new process that we're working through right now, where departments are identifying new programs or services that align with council strategic priorities and with the corporate strategic objectives, and putting those forward through a rigorous ranking process, which we intend to bring forward to during our capital deliberation sessions in June and July. So you'll likely see and have an ability to weigh in on every single one of those items that we're bringing forward.
Thank you. If I could have a follow-up, Councilor McGrogan?
Go ahead, Mayor Clark.
Thank you. I, I feel like that's a little bit flipped. I think that councils should discuss what their priorities are together and then put forward for the 5 million. But if you were wanting to know, I think that the 311/1 window is really important, and then also a proactive disclosure of city documents through some kind of library. Those are both things in our strategic plan that are kind of yet to be fulfilled. So I'd be interested in maybe council having a discussion about this and then giving some feedback to administration. We all, there's other things that we have discussed, but it might be more expedient for council to give you our suggestions and then you're not just, you know, guestimating what we might want.
Yeah, thanks for that, Mayor Clark. I actually was looking ahead in slides to see what, if this stuff was kind of be laid out a little more specifically, not that it needs to be yet, but I'm just curious as well. So, city manager?
Through the chair. I think to Mayor Clark's question, administration is here every day listening to council. We're also talking to council through the various committees and whatnot. We're clear on the strategic objectives and we understand the direction that council is likely to go in. I think we have to have an opportunity as administration to do our work and bring it back here, and then council can go through it in June. So I think that doing it the other way is the cart before the horse, and that's why we're here, to put forward proposals.
Thank you. Councilor Dubinowski?
Yeah, through the chair. I, you know, from the standpoint of staff's motivation here, it's a consistent approach with the past. The wording will be different, so if we're looking for contrasting documents from the past, you won't find it. But historically, you're correct, the city manager and managing directors listen to, look to council's goals or visibly their objectives and kind of presuppose or pre-identify what those might look like and embed them at a high level, very high level, as we've been told at the onset of this meeting, what they might be so that, so that the opposite doesn't occur where council at some... so that, so that the opposite doesn't occur where council at some future point is deliberating, moving more into the minutia, and is now identifying things that have escaped their, their goals and, and ultimately are now having to add to, there's the appearance that we're adding to. So we're better to be in this position where we have high-level targets and then kind of finesse them as we move forward. So again, a very consistent approach over many, 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 many budget cycles. My, my question to you, maybe Erin, is around just high level, not specifics, but reconciling the previous slide where it says a 2 million target for service level reduction and, and the efficiency savings against a, what some would see now as a 5 million in new operating initiatives. Just, do you want to speak to that? How, in some ways, they, they seem to cancel one out, one and the other out at first blush? Do you want to just speak to that briefly?
Yes, thank you. The, the purpose of, of this is not necessarily to continue to just reduce costs and continue to do the same things that we've always done. What we're looking at is it is more of a financial realignment to put finances where they will best serve the community. We know that there are needs that this community has, there are things that we need to improve on, and so our intention is not merely to reduce our operating budget, but to realign those finances so that they are providing value for the community.
I could, through the chair, so yeah, essentially, it's, it's like saying, well, we have new goals or new objectives, which we're, we're going to high-level attack in this next budget cycle, but at the same time, we're always looking for realignment, reductions, or improvements in efficiencies across the board. So it's not one or the other, it's both. And I, I sensed that, I just wanted to make sure, because when you first looked at it, or at least I did, they seemed to contradict each other, but I appreciate that clarification.
And I would just mention as well that part of our process is to come back to council. So we do have council's strategic priorities, the plan, and as City Manager Mitchell had mentioned, you know, we, we have been listening to council, and so we're, we're doing our best as understanding the operations to put together recommendations for you. That doesn't mean that there's maybe things that we missed that are on your mind, and that's the purpose of June and July, is for us to have that conversation. The reason we're doing it in June and July is because the budget's not due until December, and we want to know these things early. So this is, that's that opportunity, if there are projects that, that are important to you that we haven't identified, that's the time when, when it would be appropriate to bring those forward. I think that my slide thing is not working again here. We are, we are getting close. Okay, last part of the highlights here is just the longer-term strategies. So as we mentioned before, balancing the needs of today with the requirements of tomorrow is not merely an exercise in what are we doing in '25, '26. It is about looking at that long-term picture. Our fiscal targets are helping us to do that. But some of the things that we have set off into the future that tie back to those budget commitments include things such as providing steady predictable tax increases for, for residents. We recognize, as you saw on the chart, that other municipalities are seeing some drastic changes as a result of forgone revenues, inflation costs, financial pressures that they're experiencing. One of the things that we want to look at doing is providing a predictable, steady tax increase that residents can bank on, that allows them to have an indication of what that increase is going to look like in future periods. And it's not to say that it's going to be the same every single year, but we want to avoid those drastic ups and downs that we're seeing elsewhere. So that, that's one of the longer-term strategies that we're looking at. The second is, as we mentioned before, that reducing the reliance on business units and investments over the long term. And then the third, of course, is maintaining sufficient reserves, and this helps us to reduce property taxes by creating investment earnings as well as protecting the residents against those volatile property tax increases that we mentioned. Okay, it's working. Our key operational assumptions for this year start with a 0% inflation for 2025 and 2026. To be clear, our anticipation for municipal inflation during that period is actually about 2.3%. So what we are showing with the 0%, 0% is that the starting place for our directors in our departments is what they had received in 2024. That's what we're asking people to try to manage within. That's one of the ways that we're looking to create some savings so that we can realign finances. With that, we also indicate that there will be an increase to fees and charges, roughly 3%, which is really only about 0.7% higher than the inflation of costs related to providing those services. The next item here that I want to mention is our salaries and wages. So we set different inflationary rates for salaries and wages because salaries and wages are typically tied to union negotiated increases. And if municipal inflation in our contracted services is going up by 2.3%, that has no bearing on what happens in the negoti, the union negotiation market. So what we're setting as the benchmark for inflation with regard to salaries and wages for '25, '26 mimics the only outstanding union negotiated agreement we have for that period, which is the QP agreement. The QP agreement stipulates a 2.25% increase in 2025 and a 2% increase in 2026, and we've matched those for our assumptions for the organization across all unions and non-union employees.
Can I just stop you there? I see Mayor Clark has a question.
My apologies, I forgot to unraise my hand. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, go ahead, Erin.
So to be clear, our actual negotiations, which are still outstanding for all of our unions except for QP, could be higher or lower than the 2.25 and 2%, but this is the benchmark that we're using to start our budget planning. We're also starting with a benefit rate of 21% and a vacancy adjustment rate, previously known as managed manpower of 4.2, which is, the 4.2 is consistent with previous years. The other highlights on the screen include the 8 million that we had mentioned previously coming from our business units and Heritage Savings Reserve, the 5 million for new operating initiatives, and then we have budgeted a cost pressure amount of $11 million. So what that indicates is cases where inflation in our departments exceed the ability to maintain that 2024 budget. We do have a allotment of $11 million in the numbers right now that we're anticipating for that period. Okay, I think that this is the next question to council. So this one really talks, we want to talk a little bit about the service level reduction strategy that we had indicated earlier. So the question is, how likely would council be to support initiatives to reduce service levels as a strategy to eliminate the budget gap? And you might have to help me flip the slide here, it's not working.
If I may?
Go ahead, Mayor Clark.
Thank you. Through the chair, again, I apologize about my niggliness with the questions, but for me, it really depends what service levels. Like, are we going to sweep the streets three times last, or, or are we gonna close a pool? Like, that's, that's what I would like to know before, I'm definitely, we always should be looking for cost savings, I think this council has expressed that, you know, lots of times, but it really is agreeing to this at large, and then who knows what service levels are going to be reduced? I feel a bit niggly about that, but if we could see what service levels we were going to reduce and whether they would have an impact on the community, I would feel more
Go ahead, Managing Director Egbert.
Through the chair, and just maybe a general answer to that question is, this is, at this point, very high level. We don't, we do not know yet which service levels we would be recommending. I think at this point, it is more of a, a, a general question is, in, conceptually, would council support looking at reducing some service levels in order for us to solve the budget gap?
Thank you, and I don't see anybody else, just on that, I, I think, oh, sorry, go ahead, Mayor Clark.
You go, I just have a follow-up.
Thank you. So I think, I guess the question might be a little off, kind of like the last one, it's like, maybe there are some positions that are on the shelf that I'm hearing about and that for years have not been filled, and, you know, what is the gap, you know, analysis of taking, you know, I don't want to get into the weeds, but I'm, there may be some things that was mentioned earlier that we could do that won't affect service that much, and hopefully that's what we're gonna hear in June or July, is here are the things we're recommending. We had, you know, these budgeted positions, perhaps just an example, that may not have ever been utilized, and as a result, we've reduced that and whatever. So I think it's, am I right in thinking it's more of a generality of the types of things that we would consider reducing? Not necessarily we're gonna sweep the streets less, or we're gonna close a pool, or, or all of the above.
Yeah, and the, the process that we would be taking in order to do this would, as we mentioned before, one of the goals that we're working towards is a service level inventory. So what we want to do is, we want to establish what is the level of service that is currently being provided to city, the city, and then from there to come back with some recommendations to council. So at this point, we're looking at, at, as a, as an initiative. Is this an initiative that council would support in the budget? But as Managing Director Egbert said, until we do the service level inventory, we won't know what those recommendations look like.
Thank you. Councilor Robbins?
Thank you, and through the chair, sorry, was there someone before me?
No.
Mayor Clark has a follow-up. Oh, okay, she's, so I took an elected official education program, or whatever that stands for, that was about budgeting specifically, and we ended up breaking up into small groups to talk about, you know, what our understanding of what we had just heard, and, and a big part of the discussion was service delivery levels and understanding what they were. And so some people were able to say, oh yeah, I've got a list of all my service levels. In your summer village, I hope you do, but for the larger municipalities, I think it's much more complicated to understand just because of the, the large scope. So I'm reading the question very generally as saying, would I support initiative to reduce service levels, the right ones at the right time, if it made sense? Some of the, the service levels we have might be too high for the number of people they serve or help, and so would I support initiative to reduce those? Maybe. But to eliminate the budget gap, I would certainly consider it very carefully. So I, to me, the question is, is fine, it does reflect the education that I received as a municipal official from the educated program, is the understanding these, I'm really glad to hear there's an initiative to be able to provide those, and I do realize from that education session how complicated that is. So I'll, I'll look forward to seeing what you come up with.
City Manager Mitchell, and then Mayor Clark, I think, has a follow-up.
Thank you, through the chair. And the whole point of tonight's, and I think we said this at the beginning, it's not to get into the specifics or the weeds, it's to have a broader philosophical discussion about where you want to go and to get us all thinking on that mindset about how we're gonna approach the '25, '26 budget. So the purpose of these questions are not to nail anybody down to anything, they're just broadly speaking philosophical to get everybody thinking about budget '25, '26. Thank you.
Appreciate that, thank you. Mayor Clark?
Yes, thank you, Councilor McGrogan, and through the chair. I had the same question that Councilor McGrogan had about what levels of service are, could we just, is it staffing, is it, you know, maybe we, but we don't, I'm sure we don't, but like, buy the elite staplers and post-its? Like, does it include all of the things? And I wasn't 100% clear on the answer.
I could, I could maybe try that one.
Erin, go ahead.
So in our preliminary highlights, what we mentioned was $2 million related to service level reductions and efficiency targets. So the main effort that we're doing to reduce the expense of staplers within the organization is specifically tied to the efficiency target side. Our main strategy with that is starting our business departments off with a budget increase of 0%. So that starting point of saying, can you maintain within 2024? What we're trying to do is, we're trying to ask our departments to please look at your discretionary spending and find ways to cut back. We know that we have pressures in the organization that we need to be able to fund, but where there are discretionary spending, that's where we're looking to cut. And we do think that, that, that effort will, will result in the types of reductions that, that you're indicating.
Thank you. City Manager.
If I could have one more follow-up?
Go ahead, and then City Manager, if you would conclude.
Thank you, through the chair. I also wonder, and I'm sure that someone is working on this, but I kind of just want confirmation, that some proactive things regarding like moving into the future, for example, you know, capturing, having consistent, cross-the-board CRM or 311, that might reduce staff time that goes into replying to multiple different questions or questions that are the same, and maybe they're having to do the research again. So I'm just wondering if we're counting staff time in reductions? So if, if we can save 100 hours of staff time if we do X, would that be something that is considered in terms of efficiencies?
City Manager, I'll have you wrap this up.
Thank you, yes, absolutely. That's something we consider all the time. And just for council's awareness too, we've been working on this budget for quite some time, ELT, and I put out a memo, and also every time we meet with SLT, every time we talk to everybody, it's my philosophy that we are always looking at all of these issues. And to your point, Mayor Clark, there is, you know, a question about all our excessive FOIP requests that we're getting right now. We want to make sure that the public knows how much time costs and that's expended, so we always consider staff time. So I hope that answers your question. Thank you.
Thank you. Carry on, Erin.
And I just mentioned as well that a lot of those efforts are happening on a continuous basis, not just happening as a part of the budgetary process. I'm part of ECM Committee that, for example, that looks at IT, potential IT products, projects that could do that very thing, almost every, I think we meet once a month at least, but that effort is going on behind the scenes all the time, to City Manager Mitchell's Okay. Thank you for those who submitted responses. If there aren't any further questions, I just wanted to say as well that I get as much out of the clarifications to the question as the question itself. So thank you for your responses. All of it is very helpful for us to get a sense of where your minds are at. Okay, looking at the capital funding, we have already talked about capital funding in the highlights for the most part, so there's not as much I want to highlight here. We do have the original budget there, just so that you can kind of see the comparison. The main thing I want to draw your attention to is a strategy that we have on the funding side this year, which is to put less reliance on debt and more reliance on our capital reserves and working capital into that future period. And this is tied to what we saw on the debt side, where debt is becoming more expensive, and the fact that we do have a healthy reserve, so we're planning on utilizing that in the '25, '26 budget. The other part of this too is that we're looking to find that proper debt-to-equity ratio within those rate-based utilities, which we mentioned is the way to optimize earnings within those departments. Turning over to the heritage endowment then, the heritage endowment, it's important to note that we, this is one of the key strategies that administration has been working on, as Mayor Clark had mentioned, in order to provide a sustainable source of income for the community. provide a sustainable source of income for the community. And we have never actually tapped into the heritage endowment, it's been building over some years. However, in 2023, 24, we did mention this as part of that package of how we intended to solve the budget gap in, in 2026, the 25, 26 budget cycle. So we are indicating here our intention to recommend the use of those funds in the 25, 26 budget. We believe that the heritage funds should be utilized intentionally and not merely to cover the budget gap. Thus, what we're proposing is a targeted approach to heritage savings. Our recommendation would contribute $10 million over two years from the heritage endowment fund back into the community, and this would include $3 million tied to one-time community wellness initiatives, $3 million tied to one-time economic evolution initiatives, which are both council strategic priority items, and then municipal gap support of $4 million over the two years. So with this one, yeah, probably be good to ask some questions before we get into the question.
Go ahead, Council Ben-Dick.
Thank you, through the chair. I just had a question about that. So this is coming forward for this specific budget of 25, 26. It's not that we're tying ourselves into these categorizations for all future budgets.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Clark.
Thank you, Council McGrogan, and through the chair. So are these the endowment payments off of the interest in the Heritage Reserve Fund?
That's correct, yes. This would be
Okay.
the funds in excess of CPI, the funds that we're able to access as a part of the, according to the bylaw.
Thank you very much. And I'm, my question is, I guess, whether they're, what the pros and cons are to building up the principal further versus spending the interest now?
Well, obviously, building up the, the heritage endowment more would allow us to continue to increase the amount that we could take out in future years. The more that we, the more that we hold on to this funding and not spend it, we're, we're increasing the number of years where we have that split between our actual rate of earnings and CPI, which is, then can be reinvested and earn income, and it, it helps to increase that amount of available funding over time that we can, that we can utilize. However, the, I suppose the other side of the equation, too, is that what we're seeing with our investment earnings is things, sorry, in our business earnings, is that things are coming back to a normalized level, which means that the amount of funding that we have been able to contribute over the last number of years will not likely continue into the future. In order to get to the place that we are today, we've contributed somewhere around $200 million into this fund. So the, I guess, the net benefit of waiting a couple of years and putting a couple more million in won't really provide a huge amount, like, a huge amount that we can utilize on an annual basis. I hope that answers the question.
Yeah, thank you. I just, if I got it right, it's, you know, we're gonna, we can save for the future forever, but there's people today that should benefit from this endowment, correct? So we're now looking at ways to benefit our current population while considering our future population.
That was much more eloquently put, thank you.
I've never had anybody tell me that before.
Before, before maybe I ask this question to council, are there any other clarification questions about the use of the funds? Okay, then let's vote. Okay, great. Are there any comments or follow up that anyone would like to add to this discussion? Great. Thank you for your input. Okay, getting close to the end here, but one thing that we need to talk about is property tax. So the recommended, or the starting point for property tax, based on the figures that you've seen before, we estimate will require a 2.8% in, or sorry, a 2.3% increase in order to cover municipal inflation, 0.5 related to increased growth, coming to a general increase of 2.8% for '25 and '26. We're also anticipating the need to increase for closing the budget gap of 1.2% per year. And then we have earmarked here, for the $5 million, we anticipate the need to increase tax by 1.4% over the two years in order to, in order to balance the budget by the end of 2026. And again, just to, just to note that that, that 1.4 that we're mentioning there, this is, this is the cost of those new initiatives that we're discussing. However, this is still very preliminary, depending on what is approved by council, what, what the direction you want to go, that number could change. But this is the, this is the estimate going into our budget planning. Are there any questions about that? So the question that we have for council
I have my hand up.
Yeah, I just, I just see that. Thank you. Mayor Clark, go ahead.
I know, I apologize, it's really hard to see from that seat that anyone has their hand up. So my question about the increased taxes, so my, from our, I think, 2022 information regarding the budget, it was the heritage endowment that was supposed to fill this budget gap, and now we're suggesting that we are going to spend the heritage reserve on some other things, the endowment on some other things, and increase taxes? I'm just wondering what the thought process behind that is? Because obviously, a, a tax increase or decrease just benefits people who own property, but at the same time, that's a significant part of our population, and, and they would certainly benefit from that. So I'm just wondering what the, again, pros and cons, or, or what the discussion was around that?
Thank you for the question. It's a very good question. The, so just to provide a little bit more clarity on the estimated 1.2% that we have up on the screen, closing the budget gap, this is the, the portion of the increase that would tie to what we need in order to close the budget gap, as Mayor Clark had indicated. In the, in our preliminary '23, '24 budget, we did indicate that we would be utilizing the heritage savings as a potential strategy for closing that budget, and the $8 million that we mentioned, which included $5 million from heritage savings and $3 million of business unit dividend, would amount to about a 4% reduction in the needed tax increase, which is reflected in the 1.2% that we're showing on the screen. But for that 4%, but for the $8 million, that number would be 4% higher. So we are using that as a, as a way of reducing the budget gap, but we're saying that we don't want to merely use that to cover off the budget gap, we want to use those funds for specific initiatives, for specific purposes that will benefit the community. So that was part of the, part of the idea there. The other part is that I think our intentions for '23, in '23, '24, also included property tax increases in '25, '26. So I think that what we're, what we're showing here, I think, is consistent with, consistent with what we have intended in the '23, '24 budget cycle.
Thank you.
So just to, just to iterate here, if we were to, to say no to new initiatives altogether, what we're looking at here is a 4% increase to tax, which, as we mentioned before, when you look at other municipalities, they are experiencing, as we mentioned, others upwards of 10%. And from a forecast perspective, the numbers aren't any better. '25, '26 and other municipalities across Alberta are much higher than what we're presenting here. This is part of our, part of our initiative to meet that budget commitment of balancing affordability with maintaining the operations of the organization. So with that, I will ask this final question for council today, and that is, how likely is council to consider a tax increase in order to balance the budget by 2026? And with that question, I just want to provide the caveat that there are other options here when we talk about our budget gap. We don't need to balance by 2026, we could look to extend that, the deadline out further. We could look to other measures besides a tax increase. So there are options before you. What we're talking about is, how supportive are you of using tax increase as a measure to cover that budget gap in, by, and in meeting that target of 2026? Excellent. Thank you for your responses. Is there any comments or follow up that anyone would like to provide?
Council Robbins?
Yeah, it sort of ties into a bigger conversation, though, about how we grow, how we get people to want to live and stay in Medicine Hat, and so I don't like to use the word medicine at advantage, I think that, I don't know who came up with it, maybe it was somebody here, or somebody long ago, but when we're in a, a position like we are, I'm not sure that raising taxes, I don't know. I, I would really struggle with that beyond inflation numbers, and I think it makes sense. I think Director Barde said that one of the very first times when she was presenting to us, and I said, so you're, we're going to be talking about inflation, and, and it made sense to me that we need to keep pace with that, and the zeros over those years where it was difficult, that was made sense to me, and that's put us a little bit behind, and maybe, you know, extending out to 2027, and keeping just pace with inflation and not more, that resonates more to me, especially when part of our, our, the things we're trying to address are to get people to live and work and play in Medicine Hat and the great city that it is. So that's why I voted somewhat unlikely, although I'm certainly willing to listen to different options and what they may look like, but I feel like more that inflation would be a tough sell for me, when there's other options, as you point out on the table. Or if you could put those on the table, that'd be, that'd be very helpful.
Thank you. City Manager?
Thank you, through the chair, and I know everybody's tired, this is the second night, and as I was reminded by one of my staff, it's hockey playoffs. So I just really want to thank Dennis and his team, and Lola, Travis, and Erin, because they took council's responses and really made a different budget, and I'm really happy that tonight we had the opportunity to have this discussion. It's a bit different what we, what we have done in the past, but I think it's really helpful for us as staff to sit here and listen, so we can understand council's wants and needs, so we really appreciate the time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Council Canodel.
Thank you, Council McGrogan, through the chair. I'm, I am curious about the data in regards to average income earned in the community, and not to say that that is the underpinning of my vote. My vote fundamentally underneath that is the concern for affordability and the concern for the circumstances that many people are in right now with having to choose between paying for their utility bill or paying for a grocery bill, and that's not the only duality or the only conflict that's happening, but people are struggling. Now, I do want to know what the average, not to say the average income is the only thing that matters, but I, I'm curious about how community income will affect the, will affect, how this will affect those with a, like, do we have a split of 50, 50, 50 low-income, 50% low-income wage earners, 50, or, let's, that's not going to be a normal spread. Let's just go 25% low-income. I know it's not even that much, just let me, let me get through this. 25%, 50, 25, hi- higher-end, middle-income than lower-end. It just, it will give me peace of mind if we do have a great deal of people in our community who can tolerate this, that I would be more comfortable making a decision like this if I knew there was other, I know that there's relief options in place for those that are struggling, especially those really low-income, the middle, middle-range people. And again, like, I understand this isn't huge, this isn't ginormous, but it's still, like, those people that are struggling, a tiny bit affects them a great deal. So that's my main concern, I have anxiety in my chest for those people, and I am mostly aligned with Council Robbins, although I do have that balanced mind of the work we do here is important, but I just, so I am curious about the average income in the community. If we could have a spread, that would be fantastic, that would help me at least make a, a critical decision. Thank you.
Council Ben-Dick.
Yes, thank you, through the chair. I, my internet is not working very well, but I, I, there is a place you can see that information, a dashboard for the province. I believe the median income in Medicine Hat is $80,000 a year, is what I recall it having been, possibly from last year. What I did want to mention is, for a long time, that the City of Medicine Hat prided itself on being the lowest property tax in Canada, not just in Alberta, and yet, we did not see exponential growth, population growth, or, you know, masses of businesses and residents moving to this community. So I think that decades of low tax rates does not necessarily indicate a growing and healthy and vibrant community. And I know that when we were considering moving back to the City of Medicine Hat after living in central Alberta for a couple of years, we, tax rates were not a huge consideration for us, quality of life was. So services and amenities was much higher, especially as we had toddlers and small children, knowing that there was good schools and parks and rec facilities, and that we weren't going to spend all our time commuting. Those were bigger factors for us than tax rates. I think we still have reasonable, very reasonable tax rates in Medicine Hat compared to the rest of the province. If you look at our mill rates, they have not increased, in fact, they've gone down in the last five years for residential. And so I think that I'd be a lot more concerned about the reduction of service levels, whatever that looks like, especially if it entailed reduced rec facilities and that kind of thing, because I think that social prosperity and quality of life is a big factor for the reason why people choose a community to live in, not just tax rates. Thank you.
Okay, I, I just have to say that I'm, I'm on the somewhat unlikely scale as well. I, I'm very concerned about tax. I guess we're all at different stages of our life and have different wants and what have you not, but what I'm hearing out in the community is that, that we need to look for ways to keep our taxes down. I think, I'm just going to say now, I don't know how much longer there is in the presentation, but it's been an excellent presentation. I think you've laid out our environment very well, and I'm way more comfortable now than I was a month ago. So I thank you. I would really like to explore other ways to look at keeping things low on the tax side. I think, you know, when you look at other communities, I agree, they are suffering, but I don't think that means we have to. And I'm no economist, but I will have to that means we have to. And I'm no economist, but I will have to tell you, if, the more money you have in your pocket to go ride the trails and hit the pools and go skating and whatever other things you do, the more money you have in your pocket, the more you're going to do that. So I think it's a balance, and I think you're trying to find it. And kudos to all of you for doing, I think, a great job on this presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, your opinions are extremely helpful to us as we, as we plan for the, for the new year. Just to provide some statistics for Councilor Knuttl, in our financial package, we do have a financial and statistical schedule set, section. And in it, we've indicated that the median household in Alberta is somewhere around $96,000 a year. So that median would be 50 percent more, 50 percent lesser at that, at that rate. And just to provide from last, from yesterday, at the, at the council meeting, in the, in the property tax section, we did indicate that the median household in Medicine Hat is $315,000, which would equate in, in the previous, in 2024, with a 4.7 percent increase, would be about $11 a month. So that gives you a bit of an idea of if we're looking at a 4 or 5 percent increase, kind of what people would be expecting.
Thank you. Carry on.
And to Councilor McGrogan's point, we are getting close. Okay, so just to wrap up then, fiscal targets, let's look back at them. The key assumptions that we have provided do meet all of the fiscal targets that we've set. We've tested these in a 10-year fiscal outlook financial model. So our projections are showing that we remain within all of the targets for that time period. However, as we look into the new year, we are indicating that we do have high risk when it comes to a lot of these things. We mentioned with cash already that we could be in a perpetual cash burn situation, depending on what happens with the, with the energy business. Our, our free cash flow is meeting that average of 38 million over the 10-year horizon, but just barely. Our debt to revenue ratios, as those energy revenues decline, are putting pressure on our debt to revenue ratios. We are maintaining under the 70 percent, but somewhere around 50 or 60 percent throughout the 10-year horizon. And of course, municipal budget gap, we, we are meeting that gap, but there's always risk with the cash burn situation that our investment income declines, which could result in not maintaining that gap over the medium term. So we just want to mention here that while we are meeting those targets, the uncertainties that we mentioned in the fiscal target section could negatively impact these fiscal targets, which is resulting in the risk that we're flagging here on the, on the chart. So for reserves and future considerations, this is, ties back to the budget commitment of thoughtfully considering the use of reserves. We do plan on coming back to council with plans for designating funds for both the energy transition and the abandonment obligations. We are intending to make recommendations to the heritage bylaw to clarify the use of those endowment funds, as well as provide recommendations for, regarding the facilities for the future. So this is part of our future budget planning that still needs to be done. And then final steps here, conclusion, next steps, provide a recommendation for the establishment of dedicated reserves for abandonment obligations and energy transition, as we mentioned before, the heritage bylaw. And then, of course, we just want to remind everyone that we do have capital deliberations coming up in June and July. And before we end, I want to turn the floor over to you, if there are any final closing comments or reflections that, that you'd like to provide.
Councilor Van Dyke?
Thank you through the chair. I just wanted to make one comment from the first part of the package. And you've talked about it throughout, is that contingency in creating those named and designated funds, I think that's really important. We've talked about it in audit committee, and I've had numerous conversations throughout the last year with managing directors, Egert and Pankost about that, where it can be very deceptive to the community to see these large contingency funds and to assume that that money is just sitting there doing nothing, when we have $255 million in asset ARO, sorry, abandonment and reclamation and mitigation on asbestos and landfill retirement and those kinds of things. And, and there's, there's no designated funds for those. And so it can be difficult for people to understand that money has to be kept in reserve for those into the future. And also with the energy transition as well, the same thing. So I'm, I'm really happy to see that that's a consideration going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Knuttl?
Thank you through the chair. I also had that thought, seeing that on the, the list of designated expenses was a breath of fresh air to have that listed. And just for transparency's sake, I recognize that this is a great deal of work, and I want to say thank you for the time that you've taken. It's not easy to stand and speak for as long as you have tonight, Erin, so thank you. Additionally, I appreciate, and I said this to Erin over our snack time, that attaching to high-level information, for me, I'm an outside-in thinker. I'm not, I need that kind of overarching umbrella of theory and concept before I can dig into the details. So for me, this was perfect. I found that I typically don't go into budget feeling eager, excited. I feel overwhelmed. And this is making me feel a little bit more excited to start getting into the details and to make a, a team effort to decide on what is most important to all of us. So that's great. There was one other thing, but it's flown away, and that must mean that it's not that important. So I do appreciate the time. And good night.
She said it. Thanks, Erin. I don't see any other speakers. Is there more?
That's everything. Thank you so much for your time tonight. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Excellent. Thanks very much, and very well done. Thank you. And I call this meeting adjourned.